Good, thank you. This is the regular meeting of the Alameda County Local Agency Formation Commission for Thursday, November the 13th. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, other gods, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The next item will be a roll call.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Bosch.
Present.
Commissioner Furia.
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Marchand. Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Splendorio.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Who?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Tam? Absent. Alternate Commissioner Rosen? Alternate Commissioner Warner?
Here.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, roll call has been taken, and we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. So before we go to public comment, I'd like to make a few comments myself. This last month for me have been kind of exciting. All year, I've had sort of mild symptoms of little chest pain, shortness of breath. I've been to the doctor several times, and he really couldn't see anything wrong. He finally agreed to have me tested, so I went through the testing process, and it ultimately led to where they do the catheter up your arm and check your heart. And so I looked at a bunch of YouTube videos, and most of the outcomes of that were a stent. This was going to be an outpatient procedure. So four weeks ago, I was in the Walnut Creek Kaiser, and I had this done. And the doctor came out and said, "I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, but you're not a candidate for stents. You have four of your, or three of your arteries into your heart that are almost completely blocked." And he said, "We're really concerned about this." And so they put me in an ambulance to take me to the San Francisco Kaiser, which is their cardiology unit, and I was operated on the next day. Good thing about that is I didn't have time to think about it. It was just over real quick. So I've been in the recovery mode ever since then. I'm doing well, and I'm fortunate to be here. And I guess I didn't really realize that until he said, "We're just going to put you in the ambulance because we don't want you, we don't even want your wife to drive you." So I'm glad I'm here. It's great to be back. I've probably got another two or three weeks before I can, I can't drive yet, but I've, you know, it's where they have this, your sternum is really what they're concerned about is doing some damage to that. So hopefully after Thanksgiving, I'll be back. And then they tell me that another two or three weeks, maybe another month after that, I should be able to resume my normal activities. So I'm glad to be here.
Glad to be here.
So let's move to public comment. We do have one public speaker.
And excuse me, Chair, one second. I just wanted to make note to the commission that Commissioner Furia saw an unforeseen circumstance, and she can't attend the meeting today. She's attending it remotely, and we're having someone come fix the screens for technical difficulty so you can see the commissioners on the screen. And this is under AB 2249. And just to want to know if there's any objections from the commission with Commissioner Furia joining. If not, we can proceed.
No objection.
And just one, actually, last thing. Commissioner Furia, we have to ask you.
No objections.
And disclose if there's anyone 18 years of age or younger in the room with you.
No, there is not.
Thank you.
But 18 or older.
Or older, excuse me.
Or younger.
There's still, there's still nobody besides me.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I think we can proceed with public comment while they're getting that sorted. Up to you.
Kelly?
So if you look at your agenda, Gama Noodles de Mexico, Baja California Sur, you'll notice that we are now jointly, joining with Baja. Great thing, I feel better already. This newspaper article came out this morning, and it's about a boundary dispute. Now, why would I come here with a newspaper article about a boundary dispute between Alameda County and the city of Fremont? Well, LAFCO acts as an overseer and facilitator to ensure boundary disputes are resolved in a manner consistent with state law and promote sufficient, logical, and orderly local government boundaries and service provision. It doesn't directly change boundaries on its own, but approves or denies proposals and mediates to resolve conflicts between cities or between cities and counties. And later today, we're going to hear about your effort to administratively, administratively separate yourselves from the county. So, you know, when you're, when you're thinking about these things today, think about how would you administratively separate yourself, this commission, from the county? Because the county permeates this commission, permeates from top to bottom, left to right. Let's go down the list of how the county is related to this. And by the way, where's Baja? I don't see it on the screen. Baja, Baja California Sur? Please. Anyway, it's right, you know? Come on. I thought that was AB 2249, whatever it was. What did the city of Fremont say? The city of Fremont objected to the county's decision to abandon its right-of-way and give away the city's right-of-way to a private party. And the, the city attorney wrote that the private party illegally constructed an unpermitted gate across his roadway, across the roadway, and he has no legal authority in that that would allow private, that would allow a private party to construct a gate over public land, meaning the city's land. Now, what are the relationships? Well, one county supervisor voted to give away the county's jurisdiction and give away the city's right-of-way. Another supervisor voted the same, same way. Another, the same, the first supervisor took a campaign contribution, $10,000, from the private party a year after receiving this request. Another person sitting right here, looking at his phone intently, is an attorney. His law firm represents the private party. And finally, another person sitting here on the commission is the son of the person who filed the lawsuit in 2008 and in 2012.
Mr. Furia, your time is up, sir.
His father signed a legal agreement agreeing to give away the road.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar. So the next item is the approval of the consent calendar. Would any commissioners like to pull out an item to discuss before we take the motion? Doesn't look like it, so entertain a motion.
I'll start with.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion or public input? Seeing none, this is going to be a roll call vote?
Chair Johnson. Commissioner Bosch.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Commissioner Who voting for Commissioner Marchand?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Miley?
Absent.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes. Thank you.
Let's move on to the item number five. That's the Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Planning Grant Award. I'm going to turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. The California Department of Conservation notified LAFCO on October 9th that LAFCO's proposal for the Bay Area Agricultural Resiliency Collaborative Planning Project has been awarded $500,000. And with this, staff will be working with AECRCD, the Alameda County Resource Conservation District, in partnership on this grant project. And for the agenda items, staff requests authorization to allocate up to $50,000 over a two-year period as a required match for the project. Acceptance of the award enables LAFCO to begin regional planning work and that advances agricultural land conservation and resiliency outcomes consistent with LAFCO's MSR and Sphere of Influence Policy objectives. The project timeline starts in early spring 2026, followed by a two-year project window to complete all deliverables. No contributions are being requested from other Bay Area LAFCOs just at this time, given their limited role in the participation, but that can be changed later date, once we get this going, and Alameda LAFCO's role as an applicant. So I will turn the item to the chair, but staff is requesting the commission accept the award and authorize the executive officer to execute the state grant agreement with a $50,000 match for contributions and any implementing documents and making in non-substantive changes to the work plan and budget as required by the DOC.
Let's do public comment first. Mr. Abrah.
Agriculture is something near and dear to my heart, from the vineyards to the barns and the banquet halls. And when, when, so that's why I'm asking here. What is agricultural resiliency in the Bay Area? What is agricultural resiliency? Are we going to measure it in acres? Because 8% or 9% of the acreage of productive vineyards in California has been removed, has been ripped out in the last year or so. If you live, talk to the wine industry, which you should be talking to, you'll hear that they're, 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 sometimes they don't even pick the product. They reap the, so reap the fruits of their labor because it costs too much to send out workers to the fields. So we can't measure acreage. And if we're going to measure vineyards, they're probably unprofitable vineyards right now. So is that a liability? Are we measuring a liability? That's not an asset, is it? I don't know. But I think we should have a broad definition of resiliency. We should count all the little bed and breakfasts. We should count all the entertainment facilities, horse riding, you know, people like horse training, all these things that people do with horses, with whatever. There's a lot of agriculture that's being done here, and some of it doesn't show up when you just look at, or measure the bushels of potatoes or whatever that we're supposed to be producing. We're not producing it. So we need to, you know, if people here want entertainment services and, and agritourism, let's measure it. Thank you.
So let's, is there any commission of discussion on this item?
Actually, Mr. Abrah makes a point, a good point. I mean, there, there is a lot of ancillary businesses that depend upon agriculture and counting them, kind of, you know, some of it isn't just simply producing a product and hopefully gets into the revenue stream of, 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 of the economy. Some of it depends upon people actually going and visiting, whether it's a tasting room, or whether it's staying for a while, or playing, you know, or, 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 I was going to say playing golf. That's sometimes part of it, too. Just, there is, there is an aspect to agriculture that is tourism.
Thank you. Anybody else? Doesn't look like it. Shall we consider the staff recommendation? And I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second it, Hubbard.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or public input? Seeing none, this will be another roll call vote?
Chair Johnson. Commissioner Bosch.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Miley, absent. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
And Commissioner Who?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Let's move on to item number six. This is the audit report for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Note that this is like for a year ago, so turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. So this item is for Alameda LAFCO to receive this independent audit report prepared by O'Connor and Company on the financial statements prepared by staff for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Alameda LAFCO finished on June 30th of 2024 with a net position of $409,116. The report prepared stated that there is no indicators, information, or data that LAFCO will not be able to pay its bills in a timely manner. It did provide staff, or excuse me, the commission a recommendation that LAFCO consider finalizing a capitalization policy for lease and IT subscription liabilities and the right to use assets over $80,000. It also recommended that LAFCO should keep its lease terms at least month-to-month or annual leases when possible. Right now, we just have a license agreement with the CDA. With that, staff will return the item to the commission for discussion or public comment, but the staff recommendation is for the commission to accept and file the audit report and the company management letter for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 with any related direction going forward.
Let's, yes, first, let's take any public comment. Seeing none, let's do the commission discussion. Peter?
Hi. I apologize for being late. There was a problem on the freeway. I have a couple of questions about this, and maybe it's because I don't know as much because I'm newer here, but there was something in here about the reserve policy and that the, that when you look at the budget, it seemed like a lot of the money that had been allocated was for the transition, and so that part of it's been pushed over towards this year's budget. And is that coming out of the reserve that, that's, that's banked already? Because it was a, it doesn't seem like it washes out.
So I'm not quite sure what you're mentioning, but I know, at least for the transition plan, a huge, I don't know if it could be twofold. So no, not, no money is coming out to, for the transition plan from the reserve policy. And that's in the budget. We do apply to our budget every year a chunk of our fund balance to offset the agency apportements from the districts that are, excuse me, the county, cities, and special districts that we oversee. Now, there was a large charge for LAFCO that year because the county needed to be reminded to charge us for our salaries at least the past two fiscal years. And I don't know if that's what you're referring to, to that huge payment.
So I guess what I was looking at is when I was looking at it, it, it didn't, it showed that it was, it was less than what had been anticipated for, but it was a one-time charge that, that had been pushed to this year's fiscal budget is what it had said. And I was trying to, it didn't make sense to me. I was trying to determine where that was coming from. Maybe I misinterpreted it.
And this was a fund balance?
It was a cost charge. I guess I could.
I think that's what the salaries and benefits.
So that's where it's coming from?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, just so you know, I mean, us in special districts are used to audits. We do them every year. That's kind of like a religion. LAFCO being a sort of quasi-county agency hasn't done a lot of audits. We rely on the county auditor, if you want to think of that, to keep it. But their charges are erratic. I mean, we can get one year where you had no charges, and then those charges come through in the following year. So it is really a, it's, it's hard to, anyway, by becoming independent as we, as we are intending to do, we should be able to simplify this and get our charges accounted for in real time.
So it'll be more consistent, is what? Because it seemed like it was going like this, and I didn't know where the money was coming from.
We'll have to do them every, every year, like special districts and, I'm sure cities do the same thing.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Comments? Intertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
I'll move that we accept the, the audit. I'll second.
Okay. So I do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or public input? I don't see any, so this will be another roll call vote?
Chair Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bosch.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
And Commissioner Who?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Great. Let's move on to item number seven, adoption of the financial and accounting policies and agreements. I'll turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. The commission's transition plan requires standalone banking, contracting, accounting, and investment frameworks effective January 1st of next year. Drafts for each element are attached for adoption and use going forward. There are comprehensive policies, a professional service agreement form vetted for agency use, an investment policy aligned to Government Code Section 53600, and a resolution enabling transfers from the county treasury to LAFCO's operating accounts at Fremont Bank using dual controls. Staff is going to return the item to the commission for discussion and public comment, and the staff recommendation is for the commission to adopt the attached financial and accounting policies, approve the professional services agreement form for consultant services, adopt the investment policy, adopt the resolution authorizing partial withdrawals from the county treasury and designating Fremont Bank as a depository, and authorize the executive officer to implement these actions and make any non-substantive edits consistent with commission intent.
Thank you. Let's receive any public comments on this?
None.
About commission discussion?
I have a question.
Mr.?
My question is, with the adoption of these policies, is that all the policies we need to be independent on January 1st? Or is there more to come?
Good question. And I would say in terms just for having the commission represent themselves as their own employer, that will be done. The next meeting, we will look at retirement, selecting that, as well as the compensation pay scale and the personnel policies.
So I'd consider a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
I'll move staff recommendation, and I'll just maybe with it, I'll save it for comments.
Peter, you're going to second?
I was going to, well, can I? Because I'm, at this point, I'm a, no, I'm a marionette. Right, I can.
I'll second.
Okay, good. Thanks, Marianne. I do have a motion and a second for this item. Is there any further discussion or public input?
If I may, Chair, yeah. So my comment is just, I do expect that these will change as we separate, as we implement. And so I think one of the key things for staff, and I'm sure you're thinking about it, is change control so that we'll be able to evaluate what we may need to do going forward, right? So we're going to, we're going to adopt these, and I read through them. And then one of the things I noted, for example, is the signing authority, the two signer. It's here, but our chair, or the second signer, and obviously just based on the size of the LAFCO, that makes some sense. But, you know, that, depending on the volume or what we're doing, could be a thing we may need to evaluate. So, so I guess I'll just mention, going forward, change control on how we implement these as we grow up with it.
Yeah, I think Rachel and I have talked about this, and I think it's, this is kind of a living document.
Yep.
Start off, and then just like you say, look at changes that are necessary. And we shouldn't be afraid to make changes in this as we go down the road. So I did have the motion and a second. Had some discussion. I guess we can do this roll call. Vote?
Chair Johnson. Commissioner Bosch.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
And Commissioner Who?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Great. Moving on to item number eight, that's the approval of employment and personnel documents for the LAFCO transition plan. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. So staff is requesting the commission approve the employment and personnel documents for this transition plan, and they consist of employer of record resolution, personnel allocation, just the authorized positions that we currently have, and including the analyst position resolution, an at-will employment acknowledgement letter, and that's just when the current staff transitions, that we sign that document knowing that we will be at-will employment employees, and our resignation letter template, just so at that December 31st we can give over to the county. And we're just asking, excuse me, staff is asking the commission to authorize the executive officer to implement and transmit these documents as needed to effectuate the January 1st, 2026 transition. And overall, these documents should align with the commission direction and provide the foundational policies for onboarding, benefits, enrollment, payroll launch, and records management under Alameda LAFCO. So I'll return the item to the chair, commission, chair for commission discussion.
Let's start with any public comment or input? Mr. Abrah?
So focus in on the, the goals or purposes of this item, to transition to full administrative and fiscal independence as of the first of the year and support a clean separation from county systems. So independence from what? Independence from the county. Separation from what? Separation from the county systems. And so when we talk about that, is that even possible? When you have the parents, in this case, it's the fathers. Can the fathers disown their children? Can the children disown their fathers? Is that even possible? Can the employers disown their employees? Can the employees, you know, disregard the wishes of their employers or maybe their, their elected constituents? And when they come in this room, are they, will they vote to do the opposite, exact opposite of what they voted for last month? Is that, is that a likely thing to happen? Can these people, do you expect them to have amnesia? "Oh, yeah, I voted for this last month, but now I'm going to vote for the opposite" because I'm sitting in LAFCO. The, the notion of independence is, you know, it's, it's a fiction. It's a fiction. And, you know, I think that we shouldn't ask sons to turn against their fathers. Literally, sons to turn against their fathers. Supervisors to vote the opposite of what they voted last month. And lawyers to do, to, to turn against the clients of their law firm and suddenly have some, some independence of judgment. It's impossible. So, yes, the staff is going to be, is going to be independent, is going to be clean, is going to have, you know, their, the staff, I, I think they can do it, but they're, they're working for a commission.
Thank you. Any commission discussion? I, I would like to point out that, you know, the Cortez-Zinox amendments, what, in 2002, pretty much specified that LAFCOs were independent agencies. It's just taken us a little bit of time to extricate ourselves from the support that we've gotten from the county. And I think it's going to help us in the long run to be really independent. So any other comments or discussion? Bob?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to that. It's, the analogies in my mind are, don't fit. And if you look at it, the representation, you've got county supervisors, but they don't have the majority. The majority is not there. And other people that have other responsibilities, should an item come before us, if there's a conflict of interest, then they would recuse themselves, and the other people would step in behind. So this is not an illusion of independence. It's complete. And so I would just suggest you rethink what you said.
Any more?
I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. The Budget and Policy Committee has met, and we and we discussed the benefits and those things that were brought forward in, in this discussion. And we asked that, at that time, that as much as possible to be able to match what the county was providing as far as benefits. And I feel that based upon that information and what has been presented, it is, it is pretty much reflective of what we requested.
Thank you.
Sure, if I can ask a question, maybe of staff as well. So I just, I, I'm familiarizing myself with, I forgot that there's your resignation letters issued to the county. So I just want to make, you know, no problem. No worries. So I, I know we're, you know, for staff, our staff will have to resign their positions from the county. I just want to ask, given we're sitting at November 13th, we do anticipate this complete so that our staff will be with us January 1st. We don't see any problems that this won't occur and staff would be in a difficult position. So I just want to confirm our ducks are all night.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought so, but I, signing your own resignation letter is a little challenging. So I guess I just wanted to put myself in place as staff for a moment. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this? Seeing none, this will, let's take a motion to approve the staff recommendation on this.
Motion?
Do we have a motion?
No second.
We have a second. Any further discussion or public input? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Chair Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bosch.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Miley.
Did I just join the meeting? Abstain?
Thank you. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
And Commissioner who?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Thanks, everybody. Let's move on to item number nine. This would be matters initiated by members of the commission. Anybody have some comments or what words of wisdom?
That qualifier probably knocked off, so.
Okay. Any comments then?
Yeah, that's more appropriate.
Okay. None. Let's move on to the executive officers' report.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, we do have a few outstanding items and you will see them returned to the commission at now. We're slated for a special meeting in December and we will provide that to the public shortly. But just also want to give this time to thank the county for assisting us during this transition process. They are helping with a lot of, of these outstanding items. They have a really great team working with us, just trying to get this done on the deadline. So I just want to take this time to thank them for that.
I'll just sort of echo that as well. I'm sure, Andrew, you've been helpful in this. We have county council who's helping guide staff. Because like you mentioned, signing a resignation letter is a big deal. You want to do it right. So thank you, Andrew. Informational items?
Yes, so we, this commission, Alameda Lafco, we are featured in Cal Lafco Sphere for this year. And we have a project, the annual, or excuse me, that Regional Wastewater Committee. That project was featured in the sphere. So please take a gander and read that at the end of your packet. And that draft has, is, has been circulated to staff for review and that will be sent out to all the agencies and the commission will get to review it at our January meeting. And then we did have the Cal Lafco Annual Conference this past month in San Diego. So I don't know if any of the attendees want to speak, but I know Commissioner Rosen, that was your first time. So any words or thoughts on that that you would like to share?
Well, I want, I want to say thanks. Thank you, Rachel, also for you speaking. Actually, you were one of the, the guest speakers, as was Splend. It was, I found it very informative and I've told a lot of people. I've been to a lot of conferences, industry and park district conferences, and this one was chock full of learning. It was a good use of my time, excellent use of my time. I didn't leave the site at all. I mean, I walked across the street for a nice dinner, but that was it. Which I guess is good and bad. But, but for me, it was, it was, I, I learned about some of the challenges from some of the Lafcos, some of the things that had happened through, whether it was fire or arena numbers, some of the impacts about county and when they were dealing with stuff in the city sphere versus the unincorporated and the border transition between the two. We voted, so that was good. Splend helped me, you know, made sure we, we voted the correct way. It was, it was good. It was a good use of my time. I made some connections and I think it was, it was great. So thanks.
Okay, Splend, you have?
Yeah, it, it was, for me, it was actually a little trepidation because the panel I spoke on basically said, well, you're the old guy, so why don't you be part of the panel? And I didn't really like that moniker. I, I don't, but it was, you know, Cal Lafco is, you know, the organization is sort of, you know, it's our statewide organization and it's gone through a bit of transition. And I, hopefully, it's, it's back on the path. It had some, boy, some trials in the last year or two. And I hope that it's on, back on a good path, that certain members would rejoin, I hope. I saw Paul from L A Lafco, is L A maybe coming back? I mean, not having L A as part of your organization seems kind of crazy. But, you know, they, I'm not sure I ever understood the reasons why things were so bad. But hopefully, we're on the path to, to where it's a strong organization that represents the Lafco interest in the state, throughout the state, but also in the state legislature and monitors legislation and says, hey, you know, this is good, this, you know, this is bad. Puts a bill together, works with legislator, we need that. That's important. And I'm hoping it's back on the path. But otherwise, it's always great to have it, you know, in San Diego because there's just, it's nice to walk outside and, you know, hey, yeah.
One last thing, sorry. Coming out of this, I heard it reaffirmed by multiple people that how important Lafco is as a watchdog agency and as an arbiter of fairness, which was something I think that a lot of us need because so many people are only worried about their one thing. We can have someone say, well, actually, when you do this, it has a direct impact on these two other agencies. And, and that was, that's a big deal. And I think that, I think that, that helps a lot when people understand the role of Lafco. So, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend, but even had I attended that walk across the street, I couldn't do that. So with that, I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back.